I should be in the waiting room now for Teams.
Laurie, this is Jonathan. I'm on the bridge line.
Thanks Jonathan, I just tried to call you. Are you able to log into Teams?
I believe I just got in.
Great, thank you.
Hello everyone, welcome to the April 8th, 2021 zoning board of examiners and appeals meeting. First on the agenda is roll call.
Ellen McKay?
Here.
Tanya Hickock?
Here.
Dave Hale? Monica Emmerton?
Yes.
Jonathan Lang?
Here.
Dale Smythe?
Yes.
Jackie Savina?
Yes.
Skylar Quinn?
Yes.
Andrew Ramertal?
Yes.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
I would entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to move the annual election of officers from C2 to after the public hearings.
Madam Chair, so moved.
And a second?
This is all starting.
Thank you. Can you repeat your second please?
Hang on, I'll second.
Thank you. The agenda has been reordered. Any objections? Hearing none, the agenda has been reordered. Next on the agenda is minutes. For Thursday, March 11th, 2021, does anybody have any comments or would like to pull it? Does anyone have any objections? Can someone give me a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve the minutes for March 11th.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Jackie, second.
Thank you. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is special order of business. First item is disclosures, and I would just like to note that I will be abstaining from case 2021-0014, resolution 2021-003, as I was recused from that case. Any other?
This is Skylar, I do have a disclosure.
Go ahead.
In case 2021-0027, through my last employer several years ago, I did some preliminary permitting work that's related to the property.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
In case 2021-0027, several years ago through my last employer, I did some preliminary permitting work that's related to the properties involved in this. For the petitioner.
Do you have any substantial part in the present action? Do you have any, and so therefore you wouldn't have any monetary interest in this case, correct?
Correct.
Then I believe we will move you to participate. Can we have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Jonathan, I move to direct Commissioner Quinn to participate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I hear any objections, or do we need to vote? We should vote? Can you do a roll call?
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Ramertal?
Yes.
Chair Hickock?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinn has abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other disclosures? Oh, you are.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Skylar.
Madam Chair, this is Dale Smythe, I will also be abstaining from voting on the consent agenda concerning case 2021-0014, as I was also absent and I have not listened to the recording.
Thank you. Do we have any other disclosures?
Madam Chair, I have a, this is Jackie Savina, I have a disclosure in case 2021-0027. I have done business with applicant Jason Gamash on other projects, but on this particular project I have no financial or personal interest in this case and have had no prior specific knowledge on this case prior to receiving the document from the zoning board.
Thank you. Can I have a positive motion to direct Ms. Savina to participate in the case?
Madam Chair, this is Jonathan Lang, I move to direct Madam Savina to participate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Can we? Can we take a vote?
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Ramertal?
Yes.
Chair Hickock?
Yes.
And Ms. Savina has abstained. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other disclosures?
This is Commissioner Emmerton, and I was absent from last meeting, so I will have to abstain from the consent agenda as well.
Thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Ms. McKay?
I was absent from the last meeting, and so I will not be voting on two of the resolutions on the consent agenda, 2021-004 and 2021-005.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other disclosures?
Madam Chair, I was not at the last meeting either, and I'll be abstaining from resolution 2021-004 and 2021-005.
Thank you. So, since we've moved the annual elections, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I just want to put on the record that those have been, those members that have requested abstentions will be noted in the final tally of votes. So for the consent agenda, would anybody like to pull anything? Can I have a positive motion to to review the consent agenda? Approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Jonathan Lang, I move to approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Hale? Mr. Hale seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Do we have any appearance requests? Unfinished business. It looks like we're moving on to the regular agenda for public hearings. Case 2021-0027, the petitioner is Jason Gamash. Can the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you. On March 15th, 2021, a total of 60 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with AMC 2103020H. As of this writing, no public comments were received. However, the Rabbit Creek Community Council did provide a late comment, which is attached in your packet.
Mr. Thompson, are you on the, oh, we can't hear there. I apologize for having sound issues, just want to double check that everyone can hear. Mr. Thompson, can you hear?
Can everyone else hear on the bridge phone clearly?
Yes, I can hear you.
You can?
This is Skylar, I can hear him.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I can hear.
I apologize, where were we? Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Have we gone there yet? Staff? Any objections for staff? Nope. We'll move on. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you Chair. This is a request for a variance from AMC 210602OB, Table of Dimensional Standards, to allow the creation of a lot that does not meet the minimum lot size for the R6 district. The minimum lot area in the R6 district is one acre, and the proposed lot will be 36,409 square feet. There's an approved preliminary plat to combine these two undersized lots to create one larger lot under Planning Case S12592. This approval is subject to this dimensional variance. These lots were legally created prior to current zoning regulations underlying plat 70-79 and are legal non-conforming lots of record. As it's currently subdivided, the property owner could develop the two lots individually with two single-family homes. The proposed plat to combine these two lots into one will bring the property towards conformity. As they exist, the non-conforming lots of record could have two onsite septic systems that would be permitted by right on the existing lots. In order to approve this variance, the following standards must be met. Standard A is met, the lots were legally created prior to zoning regulations that established the minimum lot size requirement by plat 70-79. The request to combine these two lots into one 36,409 square foot lot would bring the resulting lot closer to conformity with current code and the neighborhood character. Standard B is met, strict application of the R6 district regulations for minimum lot area would deprive the petitioner of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. Standard C is met, the hardship is not self-imposed. Plat 70-79 created the subdivision prior to zoning regulations and are non-conforming lots of record. Standard D is met, given the character, history, and current zoning of the district, it does not appear that granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Standard E is met, the requested variance is dimensional and not a variance for prohibited use. Standard F is met, it does not appear that this variance will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of the people of the municipality. Standard G does not apply to single-family residences. Standard H is met, this variance is a minimum variance that will make it possible for reasonable use of the land. Allowing two legally non-conforming lots of record to be combined into one larger lot will bring the lot towards conformity with current code. The department finds that all standards of approval are met. Therefore, the department recommends approval of the variance subject to the following conditions on page five of your staff packet. The petitioner and petitioners representative are available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Hale?
Thank you to the Chair. I was just wondering, these are undeveloped lots at the moment, and they don't have any sewer and water, right, for Meow?
That is correct.
So, if they were to develop these lots individually, they'd have a sewer and a septic system and a well on each of those lots.
That is correct. As they exist today, prior to the subdivision that has preliminary approval, they could each have two standalone septic systems and wells. So since they're non-conforming lots of record, they would be permitted to do that by right. They would just have to get approval of their septic systems.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
No, not from me, thank you. This is Jason.
Okay, thank you. Will the applicant or applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and planning staff. My name is Craig Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, with S4 Group, and I represent the petitioner tonight. And I just want to thank planning staff for all the work that's been done on this project. And we concur with all the department's findings, the recommendation of approval, and the conditions. And just as staff summarized case S12592, is a plating action that subdivides two lots into one larger lot, and has been approved with conditions, and one of the conditions is to obtain a dimensional variance, and that is what we're asking for tonight. The two lots are about 18,000 square foot each, and the proposed combined lot will be 36,409 square feet. And page 17 of the packet shows the proposed plat. And as shown in the staff analysis, all eight of the variance standards are met. There were no objections to this variance from any of the reviewing agencies. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions the board may have, and save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
You have eight minutes and 58 seconds remaining. Are there any questions of the applicant by board members? Mr. Hale?
To the Chair, thank you. Is it your intention when you combine these to have a single septic and well on the combined lots?
Through the Chair, yes sir. It'd be one house with one well and one septic versus how it stands right now, which is allowed, each one has their own well and septic. So it's reducing the impact of the neighborhood, and was meeting with onsite, and onsite, Muni onsite is very unfavorable of this, and is happy that we're moving towards conformity.
So it sounds like the concern that the community council had revolved around the onsite systems for undersized lots, and you guys are actually addressing that.
I don't think that they understood that. I don't think they realized that the existing lots can have well and septic by right. And the community mentioned standards A, C, and F, and as the staff packet shows, all three of those standards have been met. And and this will reduce the amount of well and septics in the area, cut it in half for these two lots.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Are there any questions of the applicant by staff? No. The hearing should then be open for public testimony.
Hi, is this Diane Holmes? This is Ziba calling for your public testimony on case 2021-0027. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Representative.
Okay, you'll have five minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Thanks. I'm Diane Holmes, speaking for the Rabbit Creek Community Council. And my letter that came to you yesterday from the council was actually prepared many weeks ago, but somehow got missed being submitted, and I apologize. And to clarify, the owner was invited to our March meeting where we discussed this case, and unfortunately, he did not attend. And some of us learned only two days ago that all of Mr. Gamash's several lots are grandfathered in. I suspect this was from the Zamorillo days. While I can't say what the members would have voted on had they known this, I understand that planning feels this is a step in the right direction, even though the two lots together are still below the 40,000 square foot code for onsite utilities. The council is supportive of onsite regulations to ensure public health, and is concerned this variance will set a precedent for other undersized lots. And we wonder, with 36,000 square feet, will there be enough room for the required reserved drain field areas? Given that this is a step in the right direction, I suspect however, that the council still, had they known, would have requested what is in our letter, a preference to replat the cluster of lots owned by Mr. Gamash, so that they meet the code for onsite. I believe the owner has stated that he wants to keep the lots for open space. I believe I've heard that. And this is admirable. But in reality, they will eventually be sold unless a replat is done for all of them together. And without that, these undersized lots will surely lead to a series of variances as they come up for development in the future. These lots are very steep in some instances, some reaching Jupiter Creek. And with the challenge of these slopes, and the required stream setbacks, and the likely realignment of Portugal Place and Finland, which will comprise a badly needed second egress from Potter Valley, we feel it spells an uncertain future for these additional lots. This is why the council requests that the owner and the staff work together on the entire holdings to reconfigure them to meet the city standards and codes. The Muni tries to minimize variances and non-conformities. So working on all eight properties together now would also be another great giant step forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Ms. Holmes from the board members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
That concludes telephonic testimony.
Thank you. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to say, moving towards conformity, and we agree with staff's recommendation of approval.
Okay. Thank you. The public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please?
Madam Chair, this is Jonathan Lang.
I move to approve.
To approve.
Case number 2021-0027, subject to staff.
Can you speak into the mic?
Move to approve case number 2021-0027, subject to department recommendations, one and, must be one and two, on page five of the packet.
Do I have a second?
This is Andrew, I'll second.
Question from the board?
This is Andrew, I'll second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Mr. Hale, could you speak to your motion?
Madam Chair, I agree with all of staff's summary findings and as listed in the packet. It would just say that we've seen this type of thing before. It's unfortunate that prior to zoning, a lot of lots did not meet the one acre requirement for onsite septic. That being said, they were sold, and people have the right to enjoy the property, you know, that they bought for the reason, you know, that they bought it. And seeing people combining lots and making them larger is at least a step in a positive direction in what's typically kind of a bad case for people. You have a lot that you can't build on, the onsite septic, even though it's allowed, is difficult. So, I don't know why we would not support this, when they're obviously trying to meet the code as best they can. So, that's kind of my feel.
Ms. McKay?
I concur with Mr. Hale and the analysis by the staff, and will be supporting the motion. motion.
I believe we should take a roll call for the vote. Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Can't barely hear him. Just a moment, please. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Romerdal?
Yes.
Chair Hickock? Yes. Thank you. That matter is approved. We want to try to do something with Andrew's fourth sound. We will move on to public hearing case 2021-0030. Petitioner Nan S I D D I Q U I. Will staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On March fifteenth, 2021, a total of one hundred and eight public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter Three, Subsection 020H Notice. As of this writing, there have been no public comments received, but we did receive a comment from the Old Seward Ocean View Community Council, which was a comment of no objection, and that is included in the staff packet. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice from the board? Seeing none, will the staff please present your case, the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter Six, Subsection 020, Table 21 dot 06 dash 1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow a single-family home to encroach 0.9 feet into a required five-foot side yard setback. The existing encroachment is located on the southwest corner of the single-family home. The applicant is currently trying to sell this property, and the encroachment was discovered during the due diligence process of a prospective buyer. It was discovered that the original building permit applied for to construct this home, which was permit 00-0827, was not closed out. Thus, a certificate of occupancy, or CO, for the home was never issued. The exact reason why the permit was not closed out is unknown, but it's likely due to the encroachment. It appears that this variance request is the result of either surveyor and/or contractor error made during initial construction. The original plot plan submitted under permit 00-0827, which is included in Attachment Five, to construct the home, shows a building footprint measuring approximately 1,524 square feet and placed within a conforming location. The separation between the southwest corner of the home and the western lot line is shown as six feet. The as-built submitted with this variance application shows a separation of 4.1 feet. This indicates that the foundation was not placed in compliance with the approved plot plan during construction. The planning department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings for the board's consideration. For finding A, we do believe that the standard is partially met. There are no physical circumstances such as streams, wetlands, extreme slope, and/or unique geometry which affect this lot. The subject property is a conforming R1A lot, which was legally subdivided in 1985. It does not appear that this variance request is a result of any physical circumstance of the land itself. However, it appears that the variance request is the result of either surveyor and/or contractor error made during initial construction. The original plot plan submitted under permit 00-0827 to construct the home showed a building footprint placed within a conforming location. The separation between the southwest corner of the home and the western lot line was six feet, and the as-built submitted with the variance application shows a separation of 4.1 feet. This indicates that the foundation was not placed in compliance with the approved plot plan during construction, and the area of encroachment measures 1.2 square feet, which is approximately 0.08 percent of the total building footprint. For standard B, we do believe the standard is partially met. And there are no physical circumstances of the subject property, however, the denial of the variance would impose an undue hardship on the property owner because the encroachment is likely the result of surveyor and/or contractor error made during initial construction. The applicant is not the original owner of the property and was not involved in the construction of the home. Thus, the denial of this variance would require the applicant to bear the responsibility to significantly alter the existing home to remove the encroaching corner. For standard C, we do believe the standard is met. The existing home was constructed in the year 2000. The applicant purchased the home in 2013. At that time, the presence of the encroachment was not disclosed by the seller, nor was it discovered by the applicant during the due diligence process. The encroachment was not the result of any action by the applicant. Thus, the hardship cannot be considered self-imposed. For standard D, we do believe the standard is met. Given the character history and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance to encroach within the side yard setback will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. The existing single-family home does not extend beyond the property line and will not encumber adjoining property owners. Neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their land and property. For standard E, we do believe the standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R1A zoning district in which the subject parcel is located. The R1A district is intended primarily for single-family homes on slightly larger lots than those allowed in the R1 district. Well-developed infrastructure and municipal services are provided. Granting this variance to encroach within the side yard setback will not permit principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted and allowed under Anchorage Municipal Code. For standard F, we do believe the standard is met. There are no anticipated negative effects to the health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the municipality. The existing encroachment does not impact public rights of way, utilities, stormwater drainage, and/or pedestrian facilities. For standard G, we do believe the standard is met. This standard is not applicable to this variance request, and single-family homes are not subject to the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act. For standard H, we do believe the standard is met. This variance request is likely the result of either surveyor or contractor error made during initial construction of the existing single-family home. Since the footprint of the home was not placed and the location approved under permit 00-0827, the applicant is requesting approval for a 0.9-foot encroachment, which is the minimum variance necessary to allow the existing single-family home to remain as is in its current location. The area of the encroachment measures 1.2 square feet, which is approximately 0.08 percent of the total building footprint. And taking these findings into account, the department finds that standards A and B are partially met, and standards C, D, E, F, G, and H are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. However, if after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one, two, and three on page six of the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, staff. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. McKay?
Was there an administrative approval that could have been used for such a tiny, tiny infraction?
Through the chair, so we do have a tool in code that's called a minor modification, but that would only allow for an encroachment of no more than three inches.
Oh.
And this is over that threshold.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other additional questions of staff by the board? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
None at this time.
Thank you. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
This is Ron Thompson, R O N T H O M P S O M.
Please present your case, sir.
Yeah. In the research of this case for the owners, they called to due diligence on the purchase of this. We found out there was no CO. I researched, found an as-built or had an as-built made. Came to light that the front western corner was barely into the setback. The angle of the property and on a cul-de-sac with a fence that's on the neighboring to the west property that is sitting like a foot and a half on the neighbor's property, I think led to confusion at the time of it was being installed by the contractor. There's no records of that. They didn't close it out, so it's tough to say 100%, but my experience tells me that they probably had lot corners that they thought were on the front of the fence and the back of the fence in the back lot, and they placed the property like five and a half feet from the fence. It just, they didn't have the exact property corner set, so therefore, once it was laid and the as-built was done at the end, the unique nature of the angles of the property, because it's parallel to the far side of the property, they placed the house parallel on the east side, and it ended up being just a corner. So I believe the intent was probably there to moot it, but they did run in basically the thickness of the stud wall or the foundation wall over into the setback. In talking with the owner, we have two options, either cut the corner of the house off, redesign it, get a permit, or follow what their discussions were with the municipality of seeking a variance for this case, seeing that it was not due upon themselves. It was due basically because someone missed the angles of the property corner, and I mean, it was only 1.2, 0.9 feet, 1.2 square feet. It's very minimal, but it does meet that number, and I believe it's the angle of that property line to the corner of the house that someone had a bust in their process. So I think, you know, on a square lot, it's probably fairly easy to know that you're going to make it pretty simple, but on a pie-shaped lot that this had, I think the physical circumstance, they just did not quite get that corner placed by geometry reasons exactly right. The municipality saw that most of the criteria, they feel like every criteria is met. They didn't say that A and B are substantially met, but I believe that based upon the circumstances and the angles of this property, I think that it could be determined in this small slight instance that there is physical circumstances that are causing undue hardship on the owner of this property and the buyer of this property. And so we're hoping that you would see it that same way and grant a variance for this.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Are you, you have approximately seven minutes remaining for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
Madam Chair, I have no questions.
Thank you. The hearing shall be open for a public testimony? Is there anyone wishing to testify in case 2021-0030? Nope. Seeing and hearing none? Are there any questions of the applicant by board members? Does staff have any rebuttal?
Madam Chair, I have no rebuttal. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
We have no rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you. I believe the public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Ms. McKay, and I heard a second, I believe maybe it was Ms. Romerdal?
This is Skylar. I was also speak to the motion, but I can certainly second it. McKay, beat me to it.
All right, Mr. Quinn will second. Ms. McKay, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'll state my motion.
Oh, state your motion, sorry.
To, I move to approve case 2021-0030, to approve a variance to allow a single-family home to encroach 0.9 feet into the required five-foot side yard setback within the R1A district, subject to conditions one through three shown on page six of the staff report.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I plan on supporting my motion. I find the infraction to be de minimis in nature, and it doesn't pose a danger to the neighbors. And as far as the standards go, I agree with staff on standards three, or E through H, that they are met. And for standards A and B, the de minimis nature of this infraction, and when you contrast that with what the owner would have to do to take off that 1.2 square foot piece, I don't, I don't think it's within the interest of the public or the municipality.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn would do like to speak to the motion?
I think Ms. McKay highlighted all the points that I was also going to say, but I will also be supporting the motion, and I can speak to it. Thanks.
Are there any other board members that would like to speak to the motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Hale?
I would just like to add that because of the pie wedge shape of this lot, if you look at the LandTech-
Will you speak closer to the mic?
Sorry. This mask is killing me. If you look at the LandTech original plot plan, this house was designed to just barely fit in there. They have to have the garage toward the road. So if you were to even make more space on the side, you'd have to push it into the backyard more, which would impact their enjoyment, which is a typical enjoyment, is a large backyard in this type of a setting. So I think that most of the neighbors are enjoying a large backyard, and if you were to move this house back, which is what you'd need to do to create a little space, it would, it'd impact their enjoyment, and I think that's another finding for finding A that would support, supporting this motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments by the board? Are there any other comments by the board? Seeing none, I'll just add that I will also be supporting this case. It is de minimis, very de minimis in nature, and it would be an undue hardship to the owner to have to remove such a small area from their home. I believe I will entertain a roll call. Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Romerdal?
Yeah.
And Chair Hickock?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. So now, we will be moving on to elections. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I will.
Ms. McKay?
I will entertain the position of chair, vice chair, or parliamentarian as anyone sees fit.
Do I have any other motions?
Madam Chair, this is Mr. Lang. I move to continue as vice chair.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
This is Mr. Lang. I move to remain as vice chair.
Thank you. Should we, where should we start? Individually?
Has there been discussion about who wants to do what?
Yeah, no.
No, there hasn't been any discussion.
Can we have just a brief discussion about who's willing to do what?
I didn't make a motion.
She didn't make a motion.
No, no. I was just...
She's open.
It was just a...
So, Madam Chair, are you prepared to continue to be chair?
I can, or I can sit down.
And it sounds like Mr. Lang is willing to be vice chair, and you're willing to be parliamentarian?
Mm-hmm.
So, I would like to make a motion that Ms. Hickock continue as chair, Mr. Lang continue as vice chair, and Ms. McKay is parliamentarian.
Do we have a second?
Second, Madam, this is Dale.
Do we, should we do a vote? Is there an objection?
I think any objection would...
Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, that motion passes. I don't see any reports or board member comments. Feel free to. Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I do.
Second?
Second.
So moved. Any objections? Have a good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Sorry for all the technical issues. Thank you.
You want to stay.